On Thursday, February 7th, 2019. Situate Planning Board. I'll enter the motion of the agenda.
Shall we?
Is there a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, welcome. You're on.
Do you think we need a microphone or we'll get away with that?
Well, we can hear you.
Awesome.
If not, we'll be strictly closed.
It's on wheels.
Well, thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Mark Novak. I am the Design Principal for Activitas, who have a firm that was retained by the town to do the design for the situated track and athletic field restoration project. To my left is Sean O'Connell. Sean is our Project Manager for this project. To my right is Holly Gander. She's one of our civil engineers on the project and at the left, Situate High School. And what I'll do is that I'm going to run through a quick presentation to...I know some of you have heard the presentation many times, but others may not. So I'll just give you a quick background on the project and then if you have any questions that you may want to add. So we'll start with some existing conditions review. There's a number of challenges that the existing high school is facing regarding that outdoor and athletic facilities. First and foremost is Title IX issue. Currently, the women's softball has to travel approximately 1.4 miles from the high school to central field for all of their practices and competitions, whereas the men's baseball team simply has to walk out the back door of the high school gymnasium to their field. That is not in compliance with Title IX. It's not right, and more importantly, it's not legal. So that is one of the items that was put in front of us to address with the proposed project. Secondly, the existing track at the field is non-regulation. There's approximately a two-foot grade change from one end to the other, and the high school has not run a competitive track meet on that track because of that grade change in a couple of years. The turf inside of the track is beyond its usable life. If you simply rub your hand on top of it like this, turn your hand over, fibers will be stuck here. And that's a big indication that this turf is stale. And as you can see by the image in the top-left corner, UV degradation is taken from a number of the different colored fibers up there. So all the white fibers in the carpet currently are approximately half an inch lower than all the other fibers because of that UV degradation. There's code issues with the existing press box and seating areas. They're not accessible for people with handicap or accessibility challenges. The press box is only accessible via stairway. There is no lift elevator or ramp into it. The number of accessible seats for the home-size brand stand does not include code. And then the visitors' brand stamp is elevated, and the only way to access that can be the stairs. So again, the project aims at addressing all those issues. And then finally, the other two fields, two-plus fields, that the project is looking to renovate is the existing varsity baseball field and the JV baseball field. And we all know the challenges in town that we're facing with our existing fields, the overuse, the limited maintenance that's performed on them, the inability to apply wire to the grass fields because of water bans in town on an annual basis. And in 2016, the Recreation Department commissioned a subcommittee to take a look at the amount of fields, the condition of fields in town. And the assessment was that we are short between 16 and 17 regulation-sized fields in town. And really, the only way to start to address that is by adding synthetic turf into our athletic field portfolio. We are strapped for land where we can develop additional fields, and it's just a matter of the number of kids that we have in our new organizations playing on our natural grass fields. It's a real challenge to keep up with them in maintenance. I think there's about 5,000 heads that use these fields in town, and, you know, a good natural grass field can withstand about 200 uses a year, whereas a synthetic turf field can withstand 600 or more uses a year. So when you're looking at things, for every synthetic turf field you add to your facility portfolio, you're in effect gaining three new natural grass fields. When we started on the project, we started with the basics. We did a full site analysis. We looked at slopes, existing vegetation, winter winds, solar orientation, circulation patterns, location of structures, and obviously weapon locations and associated factors. We also acknowledge that we are in the Water Resource Protection Relay District. And in the proposed site, we have a little bit of Zone 8 and a little over half of the proposed site is in Zone 2. So with that, this is the option that is in front of you today. It is a complete renovation or restoration of the facility behind the high school. I'll start on the east and I'll move to the west. The existing track and athletic field will be completely renovated with a new polyurethane running track surface. It'll be a six-lane oval with an eight-lane straight, which will allow the high school and the town to hold more competitive dual needs on-site. The D areas, which is the area between the end of the field and the turf, which is currently grass, that will become resilient track surfacing to support jumping heads like long and triple jump and high jump, also the discus. And it'll provide a much better area for warm-ups and address some of the maintenance issues that they currently face with having to get mowers across the track surface and inside of the track. The field inside will be renovated with synthetic turf. And we've also rotated the track slightly. Currently, the track is oriented true north-south, and we've shifted it a few degrees to the west. And that's really to pull it outside of the 50-foot weapon mower, to try to minimize any impacts on that side of the site. The proposed seating is actually a little bit less than we currently have out there. Right now, we're in the ballpark of 1,000 seats on the home side and about 400-ish on the visitor's side. The proposed seating is a combination of semi-portable seats and permanent seats. The center section, right here, will be permanent seats, and then we'll have four sections of semi-portable seats. All spectator seating in this area will equal about 1,000 seats, with appropriate handicap seating and companion seating to go along with that. On the visitor's side, we will have two semi-portable sections that total approximately 150 seats on that side. We'll have a small storage structure on the northern part of the straightaway that will support track and athletic equipment, football equipment, et cetera. There'll be a new press box associated with the brand stamp that will be accessed via handicap. At the southern end of the track, we put the shot put throwing event down on the southern end. Originally, we had it up here, but we pulled it down to the southern side to keep it away from the isolated light lanes to the north. There will be a new proposed structure in this location that will support concessions and restrooms. The existing concession building is in tough shape. In fact, boosters, when they want to have certain concessions out of there, they currently have to bring everything in and then take it out after the game because of the carbon and health will not let them keep that thing in there. Moving to the west, the existing baseball field will be fully renovated into a synthetic turf baseball field. We've changed the orientation of the baseball field due to solar orientation purposes. So currently, home plate is in this location, looking out that way, which is a poor orientation from a solar perspective. This is the ideal orientation for solar, for baseball in the northeast. The entire field will be synthetic, including the infield area, the pitcher's mound, and even home plate. It's just a different color turf, which will allow us to utilize the outfield for multipurpose sports, so we can play anything from soccer to field hockey to lacrosse on this field, including baseball. We'll have new spectator seating areas, team areas on either sideline, bullpens on either sideline, and this bullpen will also serve as a batting cage. Then we also have an area of concrete, kind of a corral area. So when this field is being utilized for baseball, the goals from soccer or field hockey or lacrosse can be rolled off the field and stored in that corral area. This is a little distorted because the screen is taking it out a little bit, but this is the third field that we're proposing. The existing site has the JV baseball field, which is oriented in this direction. This is the second most ideal orientation for baseball and softball in the northeast. So north-northeast and south-southwest are the two ideal orientations from a solar perspective. Again, for this field, this will support full-size football for the cycle program, for practices for the high school, and other time uses, and will support field hockey and lacrosse as well. Just like the baseball field, the softball field will have spectator seating, team areas, bullpens, batting cage, everything fully accessible from a grade standpoint. Another item that we're including in the project is not so much an active recreation component, but a passive recreation component, is a walking trail that certainly navigates pretty much the whole site. And it comes up in the middle, will have a landscaped burn. We're generating quite a bit of topsoil on this project because you can't build these fields over any kind of organic material. We have to strip all the topsoil off until we get to firm, so great. So what do we do with that topsoil? Do we pay to ship it offsite, or do we try to reuse as much as we can on-site and save a little bit of money? And that's what we're doing. So we created a burn in between. This walkway climbs up slowly at under a 120 grade, so it's fully accessible, to a point in this area where you're about nine feet above the surface of the field, with gentle natural grass slopes going down to the field surface, ideal for informal spectator seating. And then as you meander around the site, it comes back down to grade where you're tied into the parking lot. The existing ropes course, or the project adventure, is largely remaining unchanged. Currently, we're proposing to completely fence the area in and remove the grass in between the poles out there and replace it with playground woodchicks. It's a bit of a maintenance nightmare for the DPW to get their mowers in and around all the guy wires and poles out there. So we're hoping this helps with that situation. In terms of sports being played on in the field, this is basically a layout for the spring. This would be a layout for the fall. So you can see football on the softball field, soccer and field hockey on the middle field. And then the track and field is really a catch-all as it is now. Basically, every sport can be played on that. This is just a quick graphic showing all the accessible routes on-site, so anywhere that we can walk, somebody in a wheelchair can get to quite easily. This is a blow-up of the proposed seating area. So this is the current ticket booth. That will remain, the Timmehoney ticket booth. Right now, as you walk into the site, it's at a non-accessible slope. The crossroads in that area are not accessible, so all of that will be addressed. And then if you want to get to the seat in an accessible route, you come in and around, and then you can get to all the seats from there. These connector points will be accessed via stairway. If you want to get up to the press box, you come around and to this point, this is the accessible lift taking you onto the press box level. The entire bleaching, bleached area will be at grade, so this is a walkway in front, and everything will be elevated approximately two feet above the surface of the track. Same thing, same kind of idea over on the visitor's sideline. So we'll have a retaining wall that takes us around the seating area, and this is your accessible route to get up to the woodchicks, about two feet above the surface of the track. All of the fields...oh, this is the proposed pre-engineered or prefabricated building that is going to be located down in this area. Three restroom fixtures for men's, three restroom fixtures for women, and then a new concession component servicing the track and field facility. All three of the facilities are currently proposed to be lit with LED sports lighting technology. So this is just a quick image of the history of sports lighting. I believe what you have out on-site now is either the 1989 or 2005. And what we're proposing out there is Musco sports lighting, which you have at the track and field current. It's really the cream of the crop when it comes to sports lighting technology. But the advancements that have been made over the past couple of years in the movement to LED sports lighting are quite unbelievable. You know, just looking at these images, you can see what an athlete would see. You know, back in the 80s, the glare and the spill because nothing was being controlled. So they started to control it with hoods. Then they started to control it with hoods, shields, and reflectors. It got a little bit better with their light structure, green component, and the Hid. Now, when you go out there, the LED systems provide a true umbrella of light down on the surface of the field. This is a quick graphic that we pulled together with Musco to show anticipated light spill, and there's one caveat to this. It may look that like light is spilling off into the woods, but when they generate these images, they generate them assuming a flat plain. So these fields are kind of in a bowl. Elevation goes up to the Christian school over here, and it actually goes up to the neighborhood and is completely surrounded by woods. So their light spill calculations cannot take into account actual obstructions or grade changes. But you can see where the real intense light, it's all focused immediately around the athletic facilities. And once you get out into this area, it won't be that way, that severe, when the project is completed because of the trees, because of the elevation changes. And this is only in the 1,000 to 5,000 candela range. And once you get below 1,000, that starts to get into the world of light level of 100 light bulb. So it's really low. I've included a few precedent images of what things might look like when we get to the end of the project. This is a track and field facility that we completed at Weston High School a couple of years ago. But this is an eight-lane track with a six-lane oval, fully surfaced D areas with the jumping events at either end, you know, new goal posts. These are actually the Musco LED light systems. You can see what they look like. They're a little bit different shape than the traditional lights you might see. They have smaller spectator seating on this side, larger on the home side, netting systems behind the goals for ball control. Those will be included on our project as well. Everything, all fencing out there is black, powder-coated, and vinyl-coated mesh. Just another image of the track and field facility there with a long jump and triple jump in the foreground. This gives you an indication of what it might look like, a bleacher system might look like. It won't be planted in front. We'll have a stone retaining wall, but everything, the first row of bleachers will be accessible right from grade, and this is actually very close to what a press box will look like. In terms of baseball and softball, we are proposing some netting systems at the backstop area, integrated with chain link fence at the base. Chain link fence, team areas with new benches. And this is another image of baseball with the chain link fence, team areas, backstop, having above, and also a representative image of what the batting cages and bullpens will look like.
I'll open it up to the board. You've seen this two or three times. So I'll let...start with Bill.
Start with Bill. The fencing, like for the crowd and the rest of the field chain link?
Uh, yes. All chain link, black, powder-coated, and it'll have a fence cap, safety fence cap on top.
Okay. Like, how high?
It varies. So at the baseball field, we're currently proposing six-foot high. At the softball field, in front of the team areas, we have six foot, but as it goes to the outfield, that's four foot. Around the track, we have a four-foot-high spectator restraining fence, and then we have some ornamental fence kind of at the front of the site, which will be ornamental fence, but all black.
And then is the netting behind home plate, ball field? How high?
How high? Currently, I think we're at 30 to 40. Yeah.
Okay. Protect the cars in the parking lot?
Yeah, well, yes. But I could build or design 100 for high net. In walls will still make it a way out of them.
I carry one around in my car. What's the maintenance on the field?
Good question. So it largely depends upon use, but generally, the maintenance is limited to grooming the field with a drag behind brush once every two to three weeks. And that's really to get the fibers of the synthetic turf standing back upright. So over time, they lose their kind of structural memory, and they tend to bend over like this. And when the fibers are laying flat like that, there's more surface area for athletic shoes to wear on them, and that's when the field really starts to break down quicker. So if you can groom it to get those fibers standing upright, then you're getting more life out of your carpet. In addition to that, as part of our specifications, we require that the turf vendor that furnishes and installs the product gives a day of maintenance training for DPW. So they go through all the do's and don'ts with how to properly maintain the field. And we also require that the installer comes back on an annual basis to do a deep grooming and cleaning of the surfaces. And that serves two purposes in my mind. One is that, you know, you're getting a real aggressive cleaning of the field and grooming, but two, it's requiring that the turf vendor actually puts eyes on your field on an annual basis. So if, say, in year five, we have a warranty issue, and we need to make a warranty claim, they can't turn around and say, "We're not honoring the warranty because you weren't maintaining the field." Because they were, they were there every year, and they're giving us a thorough track. It's an additional insurance policy.
And what's the expected life?
So they're warranty for eight years. What we tell our clients is you can reasonably expect to get 10 to 12 years. But having said that, we have fields that have been in the ground for over 15 years.
And how far past was it? We're just following this line of question.
No, but Bill, have the floor.
It's okay.
All right.
We're going to ask a next to go parking seat. The handicap parking?
Yes.
It appears to be, in my mind, there's not enough of it. I'm just wondering, show me where it is.
Yep. So currently, in the existing condition, there's three handicap parking spaces in this location here. I say handicap parking spaces because they're not accessible. The slope on the parking lot doesn't meet regulations. So we're actually proposing to move them over to this side of the site. We're still going to have three. The use of the facility is not changing, so, you know, our opinion is that we're mimicking the existing parking condition. We are losing three regular spaces with the transition because this corner of the site is now going to be a secondary entrance for emergency and maintenance and all those types of things.
There's also the additional handicap parking spots right across from the ski park.
And there's also handicap accessible parking all along this road.
If I wanted to be a spectator for ball field number two?
Excuse me?
If I wanted to be a spectator for ball field number two?
This one?
None of the other ones?
This one?
There's handicap parking spots that are right in front of the cafeteria, right here that parks it, right around that area.
Oh, right here.
And they're staying?
Yes, yes.
Can I ask a follow-up question about that?
Yep.
You said you're sticking with the three handicap spaces, but moving them, this is part of the existing condition. Forget about the existing condition. Would you design this with only three handicap parking spaces? It seems like you got 1,000 seats in three sounds pretty low.
When looking at it, assuming that the previous project was done to code, and we're not changing the use of the facility, we're actually reducing the seating capacity of the facility, I think we should be fine. And it's three that's immediately adjacent to the track and field, but in addition to the three, there's one, two, three, four, five, six. You know, there's definitely more spaces in that parking lot, it's just not right adjacent to the track and field.
I guess that was going away from what exists there now to what would you do if you were starting?
Starting from scratch?
Yeah.
If this was a clean slate, one, I wish I had more territory to do a lot more things. But I believe we are meeting the accessible needs of the community with the count that we currently have out there.
But you wouldn't change it?
No. I might change some locations, but count this one out.
Are you meaning it because you got the same numbers we had before?
Yes.
If it was to code, we wouldn't have the elevation differences.
What's that?
I said if it was to code, we wouldn't have the elevation differences on the parking that now exists by the...
Right, what?
Yeah, I was thinking more of the fact that we're trying to straighten all this stuff out, so now is the time, right?
Yep.
While you're doing that, is it possible to relocate some of those handicap parking spaces?
We could, yeah. We could add more or relocate. I mean, the handicap spaces that we currently have in this area, I don't think we can necessarily relocate them because they're subject to damage. However, if we wanted to add some more handicap accessible parking on this side, we could definitely do it. It just means that we're going to lose parking.
Bill, you want to start?
Yeah, the non-handicap parking, they're pretty creative where they put their cars. The handicap, the handicaps, I don't necessarily have a signature.
Oh, completely agree. Oh, completely agree.
I'm glad you say you're shifting that field. That is pure health sitting here in the afternoon watching the ballgame. Well, evening when that sun comes down.
You know, the, the, there's a lot of interesting things going on with that baseball field. There's a three-foot grade change from the middle of center field to straightaway center field. And all the water coming down off the hill off the cushion just charges through the outfield and gets pumped right towards your infield mix. Uh, it's quick creation.
It's thirty thousand, can you talk to me about the drainage of the fields?
Hi, Holly.
Hi.
So I'll, I'll let Holly, Holly's our?
Well, she gave me the question to ask. She gave me the question to ask.
So we utilize the field profile that the fields are based, are built upon. And there, underneath the field, there's a series of drains that are built that collect the water that just infiltrates right through the systems. And then there, those go to perimeter drains along the outsides of the fields. And then they get taken away. And we're discharging them to two different points on the field, on the site. One to the wetland over here on the left and one to the wetland onto the right, the right side. And everything's been designed to mass Massachusetts D E P standards. And we're reducing rates and volumes leaving the site. So we're actually making it better than what's happening out there right now.
Okay, so there's no filtering done, so I actually discharge it into the wetlands?
So underneath the, um, the field, within the trap, underneath the football field, we actually are putting a series of chambers. So they're the plastic chambers underneath the field, so underneath the stone that will allow the water to infiltrate in, back into groundwater.
In terms of the walkways and stuff out on the perimeter, uh, those walkways will not be treated, this facility is not going to be open in the winter. So there, there won't be any treatment that needs to be collected, water that needs to be collected and, and, and cleaned before it's introduced to the stormwater system.
Okay, then the most, the one?
Well, to piggyback on those questions, what does turf build up? What runs off on a turf field? Because we hear all kinds of issues like, I know in Southwest, the last burns off, it's vapor. We hear all kinds of, like, acid and shit, so can you just tell me what comes off on that field?
Yeah, um, so turf is, the fibers of the turf are polyethylene. And they're put into, they're tufted into a geotexile back or fabric. And then those fibers are held to that backing with a polyurethane coating. Inside of the fibers, which gives the field its resiliency, its natural grass characteristics, it's a combination of sand and chrome rubber, so basically ground up card case. Everything that, every drop of water that hits the surface of the field moves vertically down through the carpet and into the stone reservoir and drainage system below. These fields are designed to drain at twenty inches an hour. So if fields start flooding, we're running for high ground. You know, we're not, we're not worrying about the two hundred. In terms of regate or anything like that coming from the system, nothing to worry about. In fact, a couple of years ago, I did a project for the Fenn School in Concord. And it was, the field was installed in a riverfront area. And that was one of the primary concerns from the abutters of that project, oh, you can contaminate the concrete. You know, people worried about the plant and wild. So we went through a series of hearings with the Conservation Commission. The abutters kept, Conservation Commission kept voting in favor of the project, kept getting appeal. We went all the way to D E P, had a Judy Torrey hearing with them. And D E P rolled in favor of the field. Under one condition, that they provide, uh, water quality testing over a period of time. Over five years of water quality testing, D E P said, "You don't have to do it anymore because the water coming out of the field is actually, uh, low." Having that, all the heavy metal content and all the, the bad stuff that would be, in theory, getting leached from the chrome rubber or the field is lower than their baseline testing for the river. So it was, it was coming up clean. And if you'd like, I can, I can revise some of that, that testing reports from the Fenn School.
So the other issue that would be, it was guaranteed for eight years. I would assume the football field may or may not have, have issues. So in years, will you replace the whole field again or do you replace parts of it? I'd like to support the carpet, I, I tire, it's hard to work.
Yeah, so, uh, you just replace the carpet. So you don't have to replace the stone bags or the attachment edge all the way around it. And in theory, that's what would have happened with the existing turf field if it weren't for the elevation challenges on the track. So basically, at the end of its useful life, they come out, they cut it up into about four to five foot with, with strips. They roll it up and then we send it off to be recycled.
Is it fading color?
It does a little bit, a little bit. The turf technology has improved over the past fifteen years that this type of system has been around.
Better dyes?
Huh?
Better dyes.
Well, the, the actual fibers, that gives you the color. Now they have U V inhibitors that are in the polymers for the fibers. There's also heat reflective technology in those fibers. So the analogy I give is, when I was a kid and I sat in front seat of my parents' station wagon, and I had shorts on in the summer, I'd burn the legs and back my legs because it was hot. Sat in the car. Now, you know, there's heat reflective technology in the pleather or leather or whatever it is that stops that from happening. Same thing in the turf fibers, it actually cools the, uh, the fields slightly. I mean, there's no denying that these fields are warmer than natural grass fields. But they're definitely not as hot as what they used to be.
And one last question, you have to come before conservation?
We, we have been in front of conservation.
They said?
So it was peer reviewed, um, by the Merrill Engineers. We've addressed, I want to say ninety-nine percent of their comments. And actually, we had another conference, a conference called with the peer review engineer this afternoon. There's a list of very minor plan changes. We anticipate having their formal sign up either tomorrow or Monday. We go back in front of conservation on Monday evening. And I had a conversation with Amy this morning and just because of the timing of it, she doesn't anticipate closing, but everything is going to be wrapped up. And then conditions will be issued, uh, at the next year, which I believe is March.
Do any of those things change what we're looking at?
No, nope, they're all very minor.
Couple things, um, how much has the impervious turf changed in what you're proposing to do versus, uh, obviously with the grass? So how much of the change is there?
So the, the fields themselves are actually, um, perfect by nature. But impervious area has gone up, I believe seventy-four thousand square feet plus or minus. And that's largely, uh, turning the D areas into the, the track surface. And it's some additional, uh, spectator areas around the track itself. The walking trail that circumnavigates, uh, the two fields.
Oh, is the walking trail paved?
It is, yes.
Did you consider pervious surfaces or?
Uh, we did not.
So seventy-four thousand amounts to kind of what percentage change?
So the, the overall lot prior to, um, develop, this development, I'm sorry, I don't know why we lost it. Was approximately thirty-three percent impervious. And the additional, uh, roughly two acres bumps it up by a few more percentage points.
A few more, so not material change in?
No, largely not.
So how does that, you've, you've said that the storm water, there's, there's a decrease in flow and in velocities. So there's no, it's, it meets situable storm water. And then, um, is there anything changing with respect to like restrooms or anything like that?
Restrooms?
Yeah.
Yeah, currently, um, the site uses porches. So we are adding three restroom fixtures, uh, in the building over by the, the track and field. We will be tying that into the sewer that runs out from Cushing. We understand that the sewage treatment facility is fairly taxed in the area. I think one of the good things that we have going for this is the fact that times when these fields will be used will largely be when the school is not in use. So overall, flows will, will not change.
During construction, do you have, and it might be in here, but I haven't made sure. Do you have a, a construction plan for managing, imagine you're?
Erosion and sediment control.
Yeah, you're gonna move a lot of tops over here, right? So you have storage areas that are managed and all of that?
Storage areas, um, that will be stabilized if, if, if they're going to be there for any period of time. We have, uh, we've gone through that with the peer reviewing engineer. We've added a bunch of erosion control at the perimeter of the site to make sure that our wetland areas are protected.
The, you mentioned the pre-engineered building going up here. What does it look like?
Yeah.
He can trust the board. What is it like that?
It's actually gonna have the same cedar, uh, shade siding.
It is gonna have cedar siding, okay.
It's not the world's, it's not an architectural gem, but it's really a utilitarian building.
Well, you can't, can you get that picture back up there?
Did our, did, did our I T guy?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
There's, are there areas that you're, um, changing the landscaping on and all of that? In front, it looked like in front of the, the main ball field there.
Yeah.
What's happening there?
So I'll, I'll bring it over to you and then like he comes back. So this is going to be a landscape burn. That's all where the, uh, Project Adventure rooms course is right, huh?
Oh, these are the chips you started on?
Yeah, yeah. So this is gonna be a landscape burn that's roughly five feet high. It's gonna be vegetated with some trees. We're trying to really stay away from any kind of shrub plant, things that require a lot of maintenance out there. We want the D P W to come in and just really concentrate on mowing. And the whole idea behind this burn is, one, to use up some more of that topsoil. But two, as people come into the site and they park, if the field is being used at night, I don't want their headlights disturbing the athletes, the student athletes on the field.
What about emergency access?
Yes, we have, each one of the fields will be accessed via, by two minutes concrete drive or walkway with double swing gates that will allow ambulance and fire trucks.
And piece lock?
Yes, and then we've been in touch, uh, with Al Elliott. And he said that he would just get us the type of lock that they want to use.
And did you see the comments from the Water Resources Commission?
Uh, we have, yes.
Okay, so you'll be able to address the slope issue with four to one versus three to one?
Yeah, the, the three to one is really a factor of trying to maintain as much of the existing vegetation in the slope heading up to Cushing school as possible, while still maintaining a mobile slope. All that water that comes down that slope is picked up in a series of area drains and then conveyed through our stormwater.
The B T P trunk is on its way down.
Oh, thank you. You know, we, we, we could change it to a four to one slope, it just means that we're going to be impacting more of the existing vegetation.
I think her comment was more around the disturbed areas though, right? Yeah, so if you're, if you're regrading, disturbing an area, then the maximum slope's four to one. And then she indicated that there were areas that were three to one. So I, I don't know exactly where they are, I just want to make sure you're addressing her comments.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
What is the average depth of the groundwater for most of the site? Or if there's like, I know it's a pretty big site, so in various areas and anything?
Yeah.
So it does, it does vary. Down at the track and field, which is where we're proposing all the information systems and everything, I believe it's down at one seventy-two point five. And we have designed that full system to be the three foot feet separation to allow that situation quiet.
And, and the higher section is?
The higher section is a little bit higher.
Like the depth is great, yeah. Thank you, kind of, Steve, you might have just, you might have been starting to get into a little bit with the slope of the Cushing. But could you just describe a little, a little bit to me, uh, I guess in terms of the site development, what sort of expansion into the currently undeveloped or wooded areas is gonna happen with this project?
So in order to get the full-size regulation fields out there, the complex or the facility does need to expand to the north. And then incorporating that passive recreational trail, I believe we are, we are getting into the existing wooded area by, uh, approximately, um, what is it, fifty, fifty, sixty feet?
And will there, there at least again be regrading of that area as well?
Yes, it'll be regrading that three to one slope, that, that what I'm talking about.
Okay, so most of the vegetation will just be removed and be recreated?
Yeah, all the vegetation in that area will be removed and then we will come back and, and replant deciduous and everything trees.
And there's nothing happening on the, I guess there'd be the east side, down on the other side of the track zone there?
Uh, in terms of tree removals?
Uh, yeah, encouragement into the, of, kind of, wooded areas, no, okay, so it's mainly that back?
It's just that back section, yes. And actually, we're, that's one of the reasons why we tilted the track. Those few degrees to the west is to eliminate the need for any kind of offgrade, considering we had to raise the, the elevation of that end of the field. In order to offgrade, we didn't want to impact the notice area or anything. Or at least eliminate.
So you're going up?
On one end.
On one end?
Yeah.
So you're using filling in one end? And that's coming off of some other areas?
Correct. Yeah, we did everything we could to get as close to as a balanced site as we could. Largely, uh, the materials that would be going offsite are at topsoil.
One thing I'd be interested in learning, but is you've done an extra? One thing I'd be interested in learning, but is you've done an external analysis of kind of like multimodal transportation access to the site, so is there gonna be bicycle parking facilities? Are there gonna be, are we gonna facilitate connections with a lot of the nearby neighborhoods like in Arbor Way and near Cushing School? So student athletes or citizens that wanna walk to this complex could do that, since it seems like the parking's a little bit tight?
It is, and maybe, I believe that school currently uses Cushing as a multiple parking area. Currently, there is an access lane, kind of a trail, more than an access lane between Cushing and the high school. We're proposing to grade that out, put down some new gravel. But other than that, no other connections up to Cushing or, or other parts of the community.
Actually, there is access.
There is a trail.
There is a trail that goes into Chittingden. It's-
Are they all probably just in the?
No, well, it goes up that-
That, that, right, right between the, the track and the baseball field?
Yes, there's a walk that actually goes down from Chittingden or whatever that utility, et cetera. And you can walk all the way to Cushing School from there.
And there is handlu, ambulances do have access to go to be there and use or something that happens and that. So we can maintain that.
But it does exist. It does exist.
And there is a trail that goes from Cushing.
Right, yeah, I think anything-
That road is there for ambulances to access the field.
Sure, so I think anything that can be done to facilitate kind of that aspect of it. And then, is there, is it, are there bike racks proposed or?
Not right now, I actually had a conversation with Karen about that this morning. And I told her after we met that I would drive behind the high school to see if there's any bike racks. By the gymnasium, completely forgot to do it. And yeah, I looked at a drone image that we took, and I didn't see any. And Bill confirmed it, so if you would like, you know, you can condition, you know, that we install some bike racks. I've got a couple of bike racks.
Lastly, in this, this is, I'm gonna kind of step out of the proposed plan for a second, so. But part of our role in planning for is also to look at long-term planning and not just, I understand, fully understand it's a site plan view. But I'm just, if, if some of the proponents of the project can maybe speak a little bit to how this is going to help benefit, I guess, part of our master plan is the open space and recreation plan. And maybe speak a little bit to how this proposed project, given that it's gonna be a large capital expense for the town and it's on town land, how that helps meet some of our goals of that.
Yeah, it's a fair question. So with the addition of the two new synthetic turf surfaces, as I mentioned in the presentation, we're effectively turning those two fields into four fields. Because of the amount of increased program. And the idea is that we can, with Bill and the recreation director, we can focus a lot of our intense use on these fields and start to allow some of our other natural grass surfaces in town.
Excuse me, the tech person is here?
Those dang apples that are-
I heard the other person says, "I don't know."
All of a sudden, it just disappeared.
Sorry to interrupt.
All right, we were trying to get a picture back. Looks like it's in the window, you know, on that screen in the back there, isn't it?
We're back, thank you. Those are two of the future uses of this complex. Wait a minute, oh, so, you know, by increased programming on this site, we'll be able to start to rest some of the old fields. And in town, you know, the challenge has been, what are the two, without having irrigation, not being able to use irrigation type of water restrictions? When are the two seasons that are really priming natural grass growth, seeing the fall and then the spring? When are the two most heavily used athletic seasons, the fall and the spring? So, you know, they, they can't really perform true cultural maintenance practices. We'd always, we can still do aeration and top dressing and all that kind of stuff. But, but getting the new grass germination grows is really a challenging step, just due to the amount of use that we're putting on our natural grass. By transitioning a lot of that use over to these fields, now we can start to rehabilitate land over at Patley School. We can start to rehabilitate central fields and so on and so forth. And that's all something that Mark Lancy, the recreation director, is abundantly aware of and working hard towards.
And also? The building that has the restrooms in, there's no, in here, you don't have any pictures of that, right?
I think we had a, a plan.
Detail sheet?
It's on the left.
Five maybe or six?
Yeah, it's on the left.
So is there any kind of kitchen in that also?
There is a kitchen, however, food preparation will not happen. Really, the only thing that we'll be doing in the concession stand is plugging in a popcorn machine, a coffee maker. There are sinks in there, but we will not be doing anything like grilling unless they, somebody rolls a grill to outside of the concession stand. There'll be no fryolators, nothing requiring a grease trap or anything. Largely prepackaged foods.
The lighting then, is that, is all going to be new lighting, you were saying?
All new lighting.
It won't make that loud buzzing noise that the old lighting makes?
Oh man, I'd have an angry mom at my front door if it did.
That's great, so do you think the restrooms will be open all the time during, are they gonna be locked up?
So right now, the current intent is that the, the restroom building will be shut down in the next month. The facility will not be used then, so everything will be shut down when our eyes go out. In terms of, during the usable seasons, I think that is something that needs to be worked out between the town and the school in terms of the memorandum of understanding. They are beginning those conversations. You know, there's, there's other conversations about permit rates and all that kind of stuff. Everything needs to get folded and including, you know, rates of the restrooms and how does that happen?
That's what you were saying, didn't you remember? Last question, the, the traffic, is there now, it's not leveled, was that put in wrong or did that erode eventually?
And it's, it's a really unfortunate thing, it's costing the town some dollars. But the sad part of it is, it's not atypical. In fact, I mean, a couple of years ago, when they redid their facility, that track was designed in St. Ignatian. Two foot elevation change from one end to the other, so.
Just wanna make sure you have the downhill side.
Behind your skirts.
Okay, we're pushing seven thirty in a public hearing. Karen, I think we probably need to continue this.
If you want, you can continue it, I mean, I did anticipate many of the questions you asked and did make conditions for a lot of those, but if you feel that you want them to try to complete the conservation commission, then we could continue it. I mean, it's just, I talked to Amy today and they've worked out about ninety-nine percent of the comments, but they still haven't, conservation commission hasn't closed the, how to do it. I do have a little concern with the parking, especially if there's an event going on at the high school or the gymnasium and then there's something going on in the fields that it's changing all the attention of the vehicles.
So right now, that would be something that's worked out with the school currently, because that, that has to do with scheduling. So when there's something in the pack, you know, we try not to schedule anything. If there's a big event at the back, we try not to schedule anything. And we are, we do have communication with that, but if you also think about it, this, this has the largest parking in anywhere in the city, except for probably, maybe the harbor's pretty close, but this is the, this has the most parking anywhere. We also have Cushing, the middle school parking.
Exactly, and one of the things that we, I had discussed with Karen is potentially putting up signage. That says, you know, in the event that the lock that you see there is full directing people to the middle school parking lot over Cushing. And that's something, in addition to signage, can be communicated through the recreation department and through the athletics department at the school to visiting teams.
And we have had people park at Cushing. As long as I know well in advance, I've had teams park over Cushing, walk down and do the events when, when just something go on in the back.
If this goes forward, okay, when would you start and how long would it take?
If it goes forward, we would start July one. Well, that's when funding becomes available, or a good portion of it, hopefully. So it's either July one or right after the Fourth of July holiday is when we would start. Right now, we're anticipating that the track and field portion of the project would be completed for the Thanksgiving football game against Panome in November of two thousand nineteen. The remainder of the facility will not be completed until the spring of two thousand and four.
Thank you. Karen?
I have coordinated many of the issues with the safety, with the gates. I spoke with Al Elliott and he is happy with the gates. He prefers sliding gates, but he can work with double swing because it's gonna be ten feet wide. You can get emergency vehicles in there. We have conditions to deal with smoke detectors. We have conditions to do with signage. We can make conditions to do with, with the plantings. And I've coordinated conditions with the sewer division that, you know, with, with how they have to deal with. There's a sewer line that goes through the site that goes to Cushing School, so it'll have to be bypasses and all that. And so I've actually suggested a separate pre-construction meeting just for the sewer.
All right, I think I would like to continue this so that we can have everything smoothed out. You will have your approval from conservation. There'll be a copy of the conditions so that you will be aware of them. And we can discuss it at that time, it should not take longer than thirty minutes of that.
Can I ask a question, in terms of approval from conservation, is a sign off from the peer reviewing engineer sufficient? Or do you want the hearing with conservation formally closed?
The hearing may not be formally closed, I mean-
Why would it be left open?
Well, at the moment, as Mark indicated, that the peer review engineer is trying to get together one last comment letter and that she wants it to be everything is all addressed. But it may not meet the conservation commission's time schedule in terms of when all the meeting materials have to be in. So we may be meeting before they meet and actually issue an order of conditions, but all the issues would be resolved.
And I think we can condition our approval based on conservation-
Right, and that's what I, I've incorporated, all, all conservation commission approval would be a condition of yours, as well, of course, as all, you know, federal, state, local permits. All those are part of your approval because we condition it such.
All right, just quickly, is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment? All right, do we have a motion to continue?
Can I ask another question, well, you gentlemen? My understanding is that the only lighting for the trail is already on the ball field? Is there no separate lighting to the trail?
Get everybody through there. Okay, he's right, there, there is no lighting. We've talked about this when you all came before CPC, with the idea of possibly putting in some type of ballards with lights that are fairly indestructible, so that there would be some lighting going up to Cushing. Either that or you have a concession for flashlights. Anything.
Going all the way up to Cushing?
Yes, it is darker than a, what else? They have to park here, we have to get people outside. And if it's a night game, they're taking their lives in their hands, brought down that path. So I really think it's, it would be cool you to figure out how to do it. Okay?
Yep, I think, I think that the walkways that we have circumnavigating the fields will, will be safely lit by the ambient light of this boardside, but you make a fair point about the connection with the mission.
Yes, I think that that's important. Okay.
Rebecca? Is there a reason you would, you're starting that way with the turf field that's already there as opposed to putting in a new turf field that they can use and then changing the turf field already exists? Because once you put that up, say you start in July, there's nothing for the kids to use. Is there, is there a reason that you have to do it that way?
It, it, it's basically from the stormwater installation. You know, you wanna start at the lowest point and work your way up. And, and that's largely where, you know, we're gonna have a change over there. I, I think it'll help the contractor and the law to maintain much cleaner and better functioning site.
One thing I forgot to ask about earlier, we don't have to get into it, I'm gonna clarify for, if this is continued, is regarding trash and waste disposal. Like I don't know if there's gonna be bins set around and whose responsibility is where it's all going.
That's a poison, that'll be your responsibility to do.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so-
Could I, before we jump to that, I just wanna make sure if we're gonna continue that there's a list of things to follow up on? Right, and, and sort of what I heard was bike racks, lighting on the trail, the Cushing. I would suggest that I'd like to see the handicap parking spaces sort of maybe fixed at least along where the, where the ball field is. So those were the things that came up as we were talking and we're continuing, we might as well arrest those, right? And then trash, yes.
And also if we just get a clarification, I mean, it might be in buried in the stormwater report somewhere, but of the percent of pervious cover.
Sure. All right, I'll set.
So I was proposing that this be continued to the twenty-eighth. And that's gonna be a busy night till nine o'clock.
Okay, we have to do.
I need at least a March fifteen.
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public meeting with the site fighter to review six oh six two justice Cushing Highway and how to treat traffic and athletic restoration until February twenty eighth, two thousand and nineteen at nine p.m. And to continue the trial for action for file with the trial for until March fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
We'll likely have it done before that, but I mean, just in case, you know.
Can I just ask one more question? Those few items, there's no possibility that we can just continue and, and close the year? I mean, not continue, condition that and close the year? How about?
And to throw it to the plan?
I think the board has expressed their opinion that they'd like these and conservation's not gonna be quite ready either. I'm pretty sure we can get it done on the twenty-eighth and probably get it filed, you know, immediately. But I just, you know, we like to give ourselves a little extra time.
This is a huge, huge-
What's the bottom line on that? What's the bottom line?
Money.
How much? Oh, construction costs, ten point two.
Okay, great. Has there been a second on the motion?
Yes.
Yes, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. We are a few minutes late of a public hearing on, um... Okay. I'd like to preface this public hearing. Um, if anyone is in the audience for Greenbush, that has been put off until the 28th. So if you were here for Greenbush, you can go home and watch TV. But I thought I would let them go before we get...
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Too carried away here, okay? Thank you. All right. Um, I move to open the portion of the public hearing zoning to extend Hamerock Village Residential Overlay zoning district and to amend the zoning map. This is the legal ad. Amend the zoning map by amending the zoning district as shown is the Hamerock Residential Overlay zoning district to include all of the parcel as shown in the plan entitled proposed extension of the Hamerock Village Residential Overlay District, City of Massachusetts, prepared by Morse Engineering and dated August 31, 2018, and identified on the town's constituents' assessors' maps as parcel ID 72-19-5. Okay, gentlemen.
Madam Chair, good evening. My name is Adam Brocchi. I'm a lawyer with Rowan, Tatchell and Morgan in Pano. I'm also a resident city with me this evening is Scott Herzog. Scott is a manager of the South River Borneo Realty LLC which owns the property at 21 Central Avenue, which is the subject of this request for a zoning map change. Madam Chair, would you like me to give you another summary of the article?
You know what it is. You have ten, you have a petition. Um, you want to extend this where the orange sort of surrounds it because you want it to be in a business district that you might have mixed using it. Is that correct?
Uh, if I might just correct you, uh, we'd like to put the remaining portion of the property back into the Hamerock Village Residential Overlay District. You may remember that it was originally proposed to be included, um, but when this, uh, article was first proposed in 2007, 2008, uh, as a result of workshop, I mean, a portion of it was removed. Um, so we'd like to put the, uh, the portion of the property that was taken out back into that overlay district. And we're asking obviously the planning board's support, uh, that it support the article.
All right. We'll start with Rebecca.
I have other questions on that.
Okay. Ben?
Um, my comment is the same as kind of what I made last time when we had the workshop. Um, I have found I have a problem with the article, uh, as it is. However, from a planning perspective, um, I do understand that the underlying use, um, is the business district, which will still be permitted as a right according to the bylaw, at least my reading of it. Um, but making this now the, um, using Hamerock Village Residential Overlay, I guess the intent would be that probably there's going to be some sort of more dense residential project that I guess that somebody wants to do in this area. Um, and I, the only thing that I'm cautious of is losing, this is really kind of like the heart of Hamerock and for act, in terms of economic development and a business district. And I, I just am wary of potentially losing kind of the commercial space, particularly the frontage on the Marshfield Avenue. Um, so I guess any projects that come through, I'd look on much more favorably if they take advantage of the multi-use component of the, um, Hamerock Village Residential Overlay by law.
No, and, and, and thank you. We are not changing the underlying business zoning. The property remains business zone, but by placing the remaining portion of it into the overlay district, it allows us with some flexibility regarding uses. We would like to evaluate multifamily, which is the whole purpose of the overlay. But we've, we've heard your concerns, loud and clear. And, uh, there's a, if there is going to be a project, we will obviously be in front of you to review that project and solicit your input.
Steve?
Yeah. I don't have anything.
Well, good.
And I would like to...
Thank you.
All right.
So I, excuse me. Karen? Um, I have no comments. Um, it's a citizen petition. Um, we are doing the public hearing tonight and at a future meeting, um, the planning board will vote on a recommendation, um, for your report for town meeting.
I move to close the public hearing for the zoning article to amend the zoning map by amending the zoning district shown as the Hamerock Residential Overlay Zone District to include all of the parcel as shown on the plan entitled proposed extension of Hamerock Village Residential Overlay District, Central Massachusetts, prepared by Morse Engineering and dated August 31, 2018, and identified on the town's city assessors' map as parcel ID 72-19-5 per the language filed with the town court on January 22, 2019. Is there a second?
I have a discussion.
Yes. Second and not a discussion.
Second.
Okay. For discussion so far.
Uh, the only thing I'm, I'm curious before discussing that meeting, um, if this infographic is going to be used, is it possible to, um, add the bridge in to give the public a better sense of, because I think a lot of people are going to question where this is. Like, I started using the bridge. Everyone knows, oh, I know exactly where that is.
We're, we're happy to do that. That is literally a blow up of the zoning map.
Right.
So, um, we can come up with a graphic that can show that.
I think that'd be beneficial.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
You got a straight edge and sharp.
We have Mr. Morris here. I'm sure he can assist us in...
Absolutely. Absolutely, don't worry.
All right. All of you?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Thank you very much.
All right. We have the next open public hearing for proposed zoning amendments in terms of flexible open space. Uh, I move to open the portion of the public hearing for the zoning flexible space developing of bylaw A and then section five 50.3D to add the following language, quote, or to a homeowners association trust accompanied by a draft date restriction enforceable by the town, providing that the land shall be kept being open on natural state and not built upon residential use or developed for accessory uses such as roadway or parking as a method of protecting open space, or if, end of quotes, and change the language to Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs. B, amend section five 50.6E to add the following language, quote, ownership by a homeowners association trust and subject to reported deed restriction as described in section five 50.3D above. Questions from the public?
I have a question. I mean, Karen, I have an answer please. The deed restriction that goes on is in favor of the town? In other words, the deed restriction can't be rescinded, changed, et cetera?
No.
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 But, so the deed restriction is a restriction that, in other words, can somebody who, um, who kind of owns that land, can they change it?
No, we'll make it so that they, I mean, we can, we'll make it so they can't change it. I mean...
So the deed restriction is, is a restriction that runs in favor of the town, not of the homeowners trust, right?
Right.
Okay. And, um, the reason it says draft is because that would, that's what gets submitted first? Is that why this says draft?
All the motions we put, um...
No, I don't mean the motion. I meant in the, in part A.
Oh.
Says accompanied by draft deed restriction.
Um, well, I guess in case town council wanted to change it, but if you want to take the word draft out...
Well, I'm just, that's what I was trying to...
I mean, we can take that out. I mean, we wanted to add this in just as another option as a result of our, our development that, you know, had problems, um, with the open space.
Yeah. I was thinking, uh, could it be, you know, accompanied by a deed restriction approved by the town and enforceable by the town?
Accompanied by a deed...
It feels like draft. There's a lot of room for movement in there.
Accompanied by a deed restriction enforceable by the town?
Approved by the town.
Okay.
Approved and enforceable by the town.
Approved. Okay.
Does that get it?
I think so.
Does it?
Yep.
Does the English work such that it means that the deed restriction has to be approved by the town and it is enforceable after that?
Okay. I don't think that increases the scope of the zoning change, so I think that that should be no problem, um, changing that wording. That will, I'll have that wording changed, um, for what goes into the warrant.
Okay. That was mine.
Thank you. All right. Since, anybody else on the board who didn't stay up with?
Okay. There you go. I move to close the public hearing for the zoning article twenty-nine, section five five zero point three D and section five five zero point sixteen, flexible open space developing as written per the language filed with the town court on January 22, 2019.
As amended.
As amended.
Is there a second?
As amended in the public hearing.
As amended in the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. So now we get into all business meetings and what have you. Okay, approved minutes.
I move to approve the meeting minutes for January 24, 2019.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. I move to approve the requisition of $15 to Brad Washburn for reimbursement, uh, for reimbursement for a conference ticket, for $48.24 to Rockford Trust Company Visa for Sustainable Communities and Kephasys Conference, for $98,500 to Harriman for Master Plan Contract 19-PD-04, for $1,474.95 to Harriman Associates for professional service on the master plan, for $1,407 to Chesley Consulting Services LLC for inspections at 50 Countryway, for $7.62 for W.B. Mason for office supplies for Kyle Boyd, for $11.38 to Amazon for office supplies, for $71.41 to W.B. Mason for office supplies for Kyle Boyd, for $19,548 to GZA Environmental Inc. for grant for the Comprehensive Waste Water Resilience Study, for $1,350 to Merrill Corporation for 185 First Parish Stormwater Peer Review, for $856.60 for Brad Washburn for flight to APA-MCP19 Conference. Okay.
Is there a second? A discussion?
Just a quick discussion. Um, what was the grant?
The grant is the Comprehensive Waste Water Resilience Study.
We gave a grant to somebody to do that?
No, we got the grant.
We got a grant.
We got the grant.
We got the grant.
So, but this is paid though, right?
Well, we have to, we have to put a PO through for it, I believe, as like a con, kind of a contract. We get the grant.
Right. We get the $1,350, right? So why are we, I don't understand why we're, we're moving to requisition laws.
So this is the master PO for that.
It's $19,000 change.
So in the past, we've done like a master PO and then, um, with the EDC, we build, we build against it. So what, we cross out every month or whenever, when an item is built. I mean, we can double check with accounting tomorrow to make sure this is the right way and then if it's not, we'll bring it back to you next week on the 14th.
Okay. I, it just felt like it was a weird thing that there's a grant, but we're paying it.
No, we got the money for the grant and let's say, let's say the discussion is in the bank and now we're drawing it out into a purchase order to write checks against it. We got the grant.
And then all the rest of those things are like paying bills, right?
That's right. But this is proceed as a bill against the $20,000 grant that we received.
We'll check, we'll double check with accounting tomorrow and...
Okay.
Yeah, we have another meeting next week, so, you know, we'll...
I mean, you could take that one out and we could approve the rest of it.
I want to know, um, Kyle Boyd does not have his own budget?
No.
How about now?
It's easy to let it in, but I need that.
Well, all right. So we're going to amend, um, the GZA Environmental Inc. grant.
Just strike that out for right now, right?
Yeah. Amend it. Strike it.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve with, uh, the accounting as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ladies on the boards?
All right. Um, CPC meets on Tuesday night to go through all of the different items that are up for town meeting.
Is this one thing?
Yes, it is.
Is, is it the full 10-day launch?
No.
No? How much is it?
Uh, eight.
So, and the rest is coming out of the town?
Somehow, some, somehow, some way, because CPC cannot pay for artificial trucking. And we can't pay, there are certain things that cannot be paid for. But this falls under recreation. And we have $5 million in unexpend, unexpendanted funds and we've bonded over however many years. There's still none coming in, not even including the match. So actually it's probably the only time we'd be able to do this.
Hmm. So we are bonding something, so it's a long-term debt obligation for us?
For CPC.
Well, yeah, for the town, right?
For the town, yes, but it's going to be paid off incrementally. It, it won't affect, affect the tax rate as an override.
Right. It's just, it sort of binds CPC though.
It does, but even if somebody turned around and were able to get it through town meeting and through a vote to lower the percentage to one and a half, which I think would be a mistake, it is still doable.
Assuming it's a grant match money?
Well, yes. We're not even considering the match money.
But because it's got to make your life pretty difficult.
Yeah, it feels to me like it's sort of hits your, you're, you're at capacity essentially. I mean, at, at the end of the day, that's the decision that has to be made, right? Um, that this is the one you're willing to do it against.
I don't think an override at this point in time is going to pass for anything.
I wasn't talking about the override. I was talking about what it does to the CPC.
It, okay, if there's still sufficient funds in CPC to do what they come on, come along and type. As a matter of fact, there's a 1.6 million that has been encumbered by the housing trust and they, they are nowhere near putting a shovel to ground. So it, it's sort of this revolving type of thing. But I will have more information for you next week, Friday, 14th, because we need a lot of talk.
Karen, what would be interesting here? Be interested how it works. Because we do want to make sure that, you know, all of CPC isn't going just to the recreation component of CPC, right? Affordable housing is going to be affordable too.
Well, there's a hundred thousand to go back into the Affordable Housing Trust to supplement them. Um, historical has certain number of items that they want. But there's...
Well, I, I, I don't, we don't need to have the discussion here. I'm just interested in what, what, economically, how it sort of ends up, you know, puts guide rails on what CPC can do, so to speak, right?
To a degree. Well, I agree with Steve because I think philosophically, I think it's pretty difficult to pay a lot of money for really recreation, which is really a school project. And they presented a $45 million budget with zero capitalers. So, you know, and I know this is an extraordinary measure for extraordinary...
So, you know, and I know this is an extraordinary measure for an extraordinary time, if it's the one way you can get out of this hole, but I really think it could set a really bad precedent. And, you know, I'm, with reservations, I, I applaud all the work that's been done for it, but, you know, CPC is not a wealth for everybody's wish list for what they would like.
I would agree, and then the concept of bonding and taking on debt is the one that sort of says to me, you got to be really careful about that because it, it's going to put limitations on you going forward.
Oh, you're right. So, we'll see what happens, it may be down in flames at town meeting, who knows?
Yeah.
Who knows?
I'm just interested in kind of how the economics of it are working, you know, within the CPC budget.
All right, and EDC, reappropriated money for the boat show, there's a little kerfuffle about that, but we'll get that straightened out at some point in time. And so they're moving a pace.
Cool. What's happening with the, with the baseball field? Is anything happening?
Well, the baseball, it was...
No, no, the one where he was going to put, you know, they were going to put more parking in behind it, yeah, road.
Uh, the road field? The one of the...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Remember they had the old plant, I thought they were doing it through CPC and all that?
They did.
That's funded, yeah.
It's funded.
It's funded?
Yeah.
I haven't seen anything going on there, that's why I was asking.
I don't know if it's out to bid yet. I, I, I don't know, I mean...
I just kind of think it'd be done before now.
I'm not sure.
It's trying ever so slowly, yeah.
It's because of all that debt you're taking on.
All right, planners report? Just want to remind, uh, Shari sent you an email a few weeks ago about doing ethics?
I didn't.
I didn't yet.
All right, so can you, uh, make sure everyone's on top of that, please?
I can make some big emails.
Not everybody can, I just sent you an email.
Not everybody has to, not everybody has to do it.
Right, some people were more...
Rebecca, y'all think you do, I just tried to have it, I don't think it, and I don't have that.
And I don't have, I turned mine in.
You turned yours in, okay.
So, so an email wouldn't suffice?
No, you'd have to actually do the test, sorry.
And then you'd have to print out the certificate.
Well, it better be, or we're deep due.
All right, so we remain very busy still, um, with multiple projects before us and multiple stormwater permits as well. We won't be getting to the stormwater regulations probably till after town meeting. We're still working on the work, working group, um, on that. This town meeting, it begins April 8th. So, um, it's projected possibly to go two nights, I don't know. We also have a meeting that week as well. And as a matter of scheduling, shall I try to keep that meeting light?
Do we have to have it at all?
Well, that's what I'm asking you. If you guys, I mean, I got to know now because, uh...
Todd, if we, we have to spend two nights at the town meeting, I, I would rather not have a, a planning board meeting that Thursday, what do you guys think?
Family, I appreciate that.
I, you know, what changed it, the following week is April vacation, I think?
Yeah, so I mean, we're just, um, I do anticipate we will be getting some mixed-use special permits in. But we don't have to, I mean, I can try to avoid the 11th at all costs.
You could, you what, excuse me, I missed that?
I can try to not schedule anything, see if I can work around...
Right, okay.
So we have a meeting on the 14th and the 28th of this month, and, uh, the meeting at 14th, we have, uh, that will start at 6:30, 28th, we start back at 7:00. So I don't know if anybody's had a chance to go, um, by seaside at Cituit, but things remain, um, things are pretty under control now.
Thank you.
Remediation is moving, um, ahead of schedule, and they could possibly be done by the end of next week.
Oh, that's awesome. And they didn't have to expand and clean up at all from the same building, huh?
Um, one minor area, and it's going to, um, there, I'm still waiting for test results, um, fully confirmed back, but it's going, it's a petroleum-type thing, and it's going to the same places of the other petroleum-related soil is going to. So we haven't had any trucking complaints, and there was no water on Haveli Road today.
Excellent.
What a mess.
And that was awful, just awful. Why did they put lines down Haveli Road?
Although it's for pre-treating with ice storm.
Ice storm that never happened, okay, that's what that is. Those lines.
All right, okay, I'll entertain those motion.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much. If you're done then.